Hold on, let me put you on speaker so you can say that and everybody can hear it. Hold on, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone. Uh-oh. She said she was ordering ice cream, so uh, bring that down. Alright, I got you on speakerphone.
I'm ordering ice cream, thank you. I just left it off the work.
That don't sound like you're working. Okay. Good deal. Well, can I get a motion to begin a work session on P and Z and code enforcement?
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
On paper, aye?
Thank you.
Aye.
I was having a right. Mr. Krzyszowski, you wanna go first?
Chairman, just wanna take a moment to bring you up to date on the activities of the Planning and Zoning Office. As you know, one of the large functions our department performs is performing building inspections. A year to date, we've done 785 inspections. Some days, that's 15, 20 inspections a day. And, you know, in a given week, we cite dozens of violations of building codes, you know, and those are things that might burn somebody's house down or kill somebody, so they're a pretty important function that our department performs. And also bear in mind, 2008, we had to reduce the number of inspectors we had in the department because of the recession. We're seeing building permits coming back up and workloads increasing steadily to that, so at some point, might need to think refill in that position. We're not there yet, but that's just as workload increases that may come up. On the zoning side of things, we started using our new database in 2021 in November for code enforcement on our zoning violations, and since then, we've had 32 complaints. Of those, 34% of the complaints have been closed. We came up to a satisfactory resolution. They brought it into compliance or something to that effect. 3% have had a judge's order, took the case to court, and then the judge issued an order for it to be corrected. 41% have had at least their first violation sent to the violator, and then we have 22% of our complaints are currently open. About half of those, we've already spoken to the violator, and they're taking steps to either bring things into conformance, or they're waiting for their violation letter. And the other half have been inspected, we just have not sent the first violation letter to them. One other significant activity in my department is soil erosion, doing those inspections. Just last month, I issued 39 stop-work orders for violations. We also revoked one contractor's ability to obtain building permits anymore because of the extensive violations. And keep in mind, each stop-work order may involve five, six inspections to get to that point before we're actually able to lift that stop-work order. So that's just some of the activities of the Planning and Zoning Office.
With the program we got, I mean, what's your thoughts? Any, anything we can improve upon, or I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I mean, what's your thoughts?
Um, would be a matter of shifting focus if we wanted to do less building inspections or more code enforcement, but we're, we're pretty busy. So, we've recently started issuing citations within our department, changed the way that that's being handled. We're seeing how that's gonna play out for us, so that's one change that we're gonna see how that has, if it has a positive impact.
I know you held about three men's positions there for about better part of the year, if I remember right, before you finally got to...
Yes, sir, it was, it was 13 months before we had a full, that spot filled full-time.
Yep, and you, I mean, you had your, you had your plate loaded, but you got, sounded like you got a good person in place.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Yeah, Russell's working out great, and, you know, Baz takes care of his building inspections, and then when he gets those done, then he works his code enforcement.
Any questions for the board?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and address the elephant in the room that, so, I know we went from to some anonymous reporting. Are you seeing an increase in complaints from that over just having to put something in writing or having to...
Yes.
Cause I know I've, I've transferred maybe five in the last month to you that I know are in these that, and I'll just say, you know, this person called, or this address called, and here's the complaint problem, so, uh...
Okay. I've had several too, that I just haven't called you directly. Help me. Mr. Moon?
Question on the anonymous, anonymous reporting. If someone anonymously reports, is their phone number visible? Is the email address visible? Because that, even though they may not put a name in, you can still trace back through easy process elimination of figuring out who it is, or is it strictly X is out and just the complaint comes through?
Depends on how the complaint comes to me. If they use the portal, it would have an email address assigned to it. If somebody calls me, their phone number is visible on caller ID. I don't normally write that down. If somehow it's stuck in my head that I remembered that that person called, then it would not be anonymous, but normally, I don't write, I wouldn't write down the name that I saw calling in with it.
The only way that that number would show up as a person's phone, as a person's name is if you have their contacts in your phone, right?
No, sir, caller ID.
Caller ID on the office phone?
Yeah.
Right, but it, but...
I don't normally get, like, anonymous complaints from myself, yeah, it's kinda, but then their phone number will pop up there.
Right, cause I know the ones that I would call, the four or five that I've called in the last month, are people that call me and say, "I would rather not put my name on something." And I'll call you and say, you know, "124 Smith Circle" is the address that the complaint is about. And I've gotten an anonymous tip that 124 Smith Circle is an illegal business going there. And, and the response I get from you is, "Okay, I'll go check it out," and then you tell me what, what you found, what happens or whatever is next, and I'll report that back to them. So I know when they call in, um, to the office, you know, this is, and I put this in the, in the question thing, the problem we have with, we don't have an app system or a phone system that automatically blocks out people's number. That's on the caller. If they wanna have, you, you can, whatever it is, or whatever, to, to block your caller ID, so it doesn't come through as a caller ID, but, but your carrier can also allow you to have anonymous phone calls in there, if, if you wanna go through the trouble of being a truly anonymous, but I think for, for the purpose of being an anonymous phone call, it's, somebody can call the office, their commissioner, the main office in the front up here and say, "Hey, I'm not saying my name, I don't wanna know, then know who this is, but this address, there's a problem." And, and I think it's something illegal going on. Whether that's code enforcement, P and Z, or law enforcement, it's transferred to that department, and, and it can be handled without saying Jane Smith called and said her neighbor was doing this, this, and this. And I think that's the intent of it, cause everybody that's called me was, "I don't really want my name out there, because these people have already know that, you know, there'll be some recourse if, if they know that I called." And I think that was the intent, for me, that was the intent of the anonymous calls.
Right.
To add to that as well, too.
I was just gonna say, we'll drop, give people the website address, and they'll download my complaint form, and they can just mail it back to me. I give them anonymously that way as well.
Also, on the, the online system, if you've noticed where you go in and put in your name, if there's an anonymous and asterisk there, I perceive things and they'll put in anonymous@anonymous.com. So I mean, there's, there's plenty of ways, and also, like you said, blocking phone numbers, there's plenty of ways to submit an anonymous. When you call and give one like that, I just put, you know, received by Commissioner Kitchens and we get that.
Alright, ladies first. Has, Commissioner Bone got any questions?
Wendy, you have anything?
I, I was listening, and what she said about the anonymous part of it, that's what, I, I was thinking that when we got the software, that was gonna be one of the things, that the only people that can see those numbers are those with access to the data being entered, is that correct? Or if the complaint is up on the website, I mean, if the complaint is up there, the, the person that put in the complaint, all their information is there for everybody to see, that can, that can see.
No, yeah. Yeah, no, when you, when you put in a complaint, you can only see, you can't see everybody's complaint and address and names on the system itself. That's administrative rights to the system. So, yeah, the public can't see, I mean, we couldn't, yeah, legally, we couldn't, we couldn't give out public information like that anyway.
Right.
That all, Commissioner Bone?
So can I, what?
We're gonna, we're gonna get the, we're doing this, and then we'll go to questions. Commissioner Bone, I mean, Commissioner Martin, any questions?
I do, uh, so, in the past meeting, we had, you know, the complaint about the sawmill, but we discovered, at least I thought, after, you know, potential awareness of an illegal trucking business operating out of the neighborhood. If we hear things like that, are we proactive and investigating or responding, or we have to wait until somebody complains for something like that to be brought up? And the reason why I say that is because I remember distinctly hearing the young lady say, "Oh, yeah, he brings his trucks in, and all his friends bring trucks," and I'm going, "It's a trucking business in the neighborhood." But we were there to talk about the sawmill, so I didn't wanna confuse the issue. So again, if we hear things like that, do we follow up, or do we have to wait for a complaint?
I wait for a complaint.
You hear that? You hear that, Commissioner Martin? He waits for a complaint?
Yes, and so then my next question is, I got emails like that night, the day before, the day after, and then text messages about additional complaints that they were filing. Did you get any additional follow-up complaints from them, or did they just not follow up?
Yes, they followed up.
Okay. Great, cause my phone was gone for two or three days, I just didn't wanna fill it up. With addition to the, the software, and I heard, I think Sam asked, do we have an uptake in responses? Do we need to look at hiring an additional support person based on how long it took you to hire this person, considering what may come up in the future?
He's asking your thoughts, is it...
Yeah.
That position made it...
I'm weighing it now. I don't know that we'd have enough work for a full-time person at this point, and I don't know, if we, if we tried to change our approach, we definitely would need help. Right now, being reactive in the volume of complaints, we're, we're managing with that. We don't have things, right now, languishing for a long time, not, nothing happening with them. You know, prior to, we got the inspector hired, I had my hands full and was not able to keep up with it, but right now, we're keeping up with the workload.
Okay, and then the reason why, I guess if we don't have full-time, this is a great time to train somebody part-time and maybe create an opportunity, so we can be proactive, because the plate committee has been on us pretty strong. I know some of the calls, Tiffany's will tiles, the other calls are yours, and rather than create a full-time, it benefits all that additional expense, if there's a part-time opportunity for somebody who we can leverage to help us keep the workload down and be proactive in our community, I would be interested in that, so you are not inundated later when people find out more about the software, and then how to make anonymous complaints, and then also just help us be proactive.
One more, you got a question, Commissioner Wood?
I do. I agree with Daylon Martin. He brought up many good points, and I know in the past, the county has been reactive, you know, and I'm curious, like, if you or your employee, if they were driving by an area and they saw a violation, unless somebody's made a complaint, I'm, from my understanding, it's not pursued, whether it be illegal dumping, or if it's an erosion issue of a job site that's improperly secured the way it's supposed to be, for soil erosion. If we had an additional employee, that helps shift the burden from the reactive, and I'm not a fan of reactive. We need to be more proactive, if not all the way proactive. You know, an additional employee would help us get ahead of that, and, cause there are certain things we ride by in this county, whether it's a pile of tires, or whatever, and it's like, how do we handle that? In my book, we need to handle it proactively, instead of waiting for those complaints to mount up and then somebody worrying about, am I truly anonymous? Cause they are fearful of retaliation from their neighbors, and I hear that, cause a lot of people just sit back and grumble about it and don't come forward because of fear of that, so I'm...
I will just, on soil erosion, I am proactive on that. We have active building permits, and we monitor that.
Right, but if somebody doesn't have a building permit, just goes out and does something...
That, that would be, yeah, that would probably get left alone.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Krzyszowski?
No, not, not for Tim, I just, I wanna be clear upfront on proactive and reactive. This board agreed that we would be proactive in the sense, with, with regards to discrimination, because in my opinion, and, and, you know, we'll get our, our legal opinion on it, but we have to be real careful of, of targeting particular instances of blight, of anything like that, and I'll, I'll read from, and, and we were sent this redevelopment that the city of Macon Bib uses too, and it talks about, where it gives some, some definition on, on whether, let's see, "Any employee authorized to make inspections in accordance with this section may, on his or own initiative, inspect any property observed in the community wherein, in the opinion of the inspector, it is plainly and visible, visibly observable, observable from the public right-of-way that such property falls in the definition of blighted property. Nothing in subsection shall impose a duty upon any inspector to inspect any property observed within the community regardless of condition." So I think that clarifies that, yes, we can be proactive, and we can address issues that are visible and obvious from a public right-of-way, but we gotta be real careful of riding down a road and seeing something, and I'm gonna pull in here, and, because when we have to fight that battle, what reason do we have for, for doing it? And that's, that's my opinion. Actually, am I, am I way off on...
So we, we have talked about proactive and reactive, I really feel toward about blue in the face. Our ordinances are not either, and I've said that. It does not say that we're proactive, it does not say that we're reactive. It does not force us to be proactive, it does not force us to be reactive. So years ago, when Frank Child suggested to take a more reactive response, it was to avoid targeting, that was just a cautionary, let's not get ourselves in trouble, it is probably more prudent to be a bit more reactive. But the ordinances don't say that we can't be one or the other, or that we have to be one or the other. So if Tiffany is driving around and seeing, and sees a major violation, she has the ability and the authority under the ordinances to cite. What we have to be careful of is taking it to the level of sending Tiffany out to go look in this neighborhood and see if you can cite. That is a whole different line that we can't cross. Certainly, if she comes across something that's not been reported in her duties and sees that it's a clear violation, she absolutely can cite. Our ordinances do not prevent her from being able to do that, just because a complaint hasn't been issued. But I, it would be certainly my legal advice to this board, that we cannot cross the line of saying, "Okay, Tiffany, this week, you're going down this road, and you're gonna cite everybody that has a violation. This week, you're going down this road, and you're gonna look and cite everybody that has a violation." That certainly could arise to the level of targeting and be a major, have major legal repercussions for us, but observing it, as she drives the community, as she's checking on something else, things of that nature, she can cite without a complaint being there, which is why I say, our ordinances do not say that we are one or the other, or can only cite proactively or reactively. So it, it's really not an issue, because our ordinances don't force our, us into either category.
And, and I think that, so, so questions of, you know, are we being proactive or reactive, I think there's, there's several components of it. I think we, as a board, need to be clear to staff that we are, at the extent possible, proactive, meaning that we do want to stamp out blight, we do wanna notice these violations, we do know, we, we do wanna take care of these violations. With that comes the hurdle of, if I saw something somewhere that, you know, I'm riding down Gray Highway, and there's a violation, and I saw Tiffany ride down the other way, and I called and said, "Hey, you didn't see that big pile of junk over here? You know, why didn't you stop and talk with them?" Well, you know, it's kinda hard to prove if somebody saw it or didn't see it or whatever. If we have a complaint, then we know that it's, needs to be addressed. So, so that is a given when we get a complaint on it, and I think that was us attempting to be more proactive by saying, "We'll take complaints by phone, email, carrier pigeon, anonymously, it don't matter. If, if we know about it, we'll address it." The other thing I wanna be real clear about is, since our ordinances were not reactive or proactive, our whole database, our whole collection, our whole system is not set up for, was it something you got a call on, or was it something you just happened to see while you were riding down the road? So it's really hard for us to categorize reactive versus proactive. It's hard to say, how many did you, how many did you, tickets did you write while you were out writing another ticket? We got you back now. How did, you know, that, those are things that, I, I'm seeing the questions, and I understand the questions, I understand the, the concern is, that's a way to get to the next level of stamping out the black, and I, and I agree with that, we just, it's, it's hard to categorize that when the system's not set up to say, "Well, I was out at 124, and I saw 125 and 129, so I went ahead and talked to those and addressed them." Yes, there's a way to do that, but, but our system was not designed for that, at the end of the day, to go back and verify that there was a call and there was an initiation of a, of an inspection. So those are two things that are hard to, to define reactive and proactive, and that's why I asked from the beginning, with the anonymous calls and what we call proactive, and this is, and I'm just being honest with you two, this is where it's gonna gauge, are we being more proactive if we see that our calls are going up, or our inspections are going up, and that kind of stuff? That verifies that we're not just waiting on somebody to call us, that we are more proactive. So I think, I, I think those are the things that help us get to that next level in, in doing better than we did yesterday, if that makes any sense.
And I just wanna clarify quickly, so active, you know, when we have a report that has, you know, been extensively worked on by a committee, by other members of the community, and the proactive part, in my opinion, if taking that information and starting to do that heavy lifting, or the net lifting that they've already done, right? So that's the first part of proactive. Then the other part is when we do get a complaint, right? We do go out and investigate, because there's a concern that when a complaint happens, it kinda, you know, just falls into limbo, or it gets there, but nothing happens, but then showing through transparency, here's where we are, we know there's a complaint, here's what we did, we went out, and here's the status, you know, it's pending, it's got an investigation, it's in court, right? And, and that shows that we are doing the work, we're proactively responding, right, at this point, cause to your point, actually, I definitely don't want Tiffany going down the street looking, cause that's crazy, but I do want Tiffany and Tim to be able to have the tools to respond, the people to respond, the resources to respond, and the county to do what's best and right by, you know, the committee did the work, and the citizens and taxpayers that move to our county, because it is a beautiful place to live.
Any more questions for Tim?
I know Tiffany had it.
Alright, we're going to start with...
One of the things when I was speaking to Ms. Brody was a rule of thumb that she kinda gave me was, if I'm saying Commissioner Kitchens' house, and I'm there for a valid complaint, if I see something very obvious right there in that vicinity, next door, then I'm okay to do that, but like she said, you can't just throw a dart at the door and say, "I'm on target this road that day." So that in itself will actually, over time, start expanding, you know, if I'm here, make it two or three here, if I'm here, make it two or three here, so that's gonna, that's gonna start expanding as well, too, as far as the number of complaints we have.
We're going to do your work session, Mark.
Sure, you ready?
Go, we're ready, go for it.
I'm gonna try to keep it short, but I've got a good bit of information. I know a lot of people are concerned about the status of our county, wanting to keep it clean and beautiful, but back when Commissioner Pitts was on the board, he had asked me to look around at comparable counties, like size, like population, to see what they were doing. We were actually very surprised. Putnam County was right up under us, had just started doing things. Monroe County was the same. Greene County would write a letter, do nothing. Jasper County didn't have an ordinance in place. Wilkinson County had no ordinances in place, and Baldwin County had ordinances that they were on the books that a judge would not uphold. And recently, there's been some changes with Baldwin County.
Baldwin County, you know, I was asked to call Commissioner, Sheriff Craig, and he had talked about the 300 and something that was on the books, I think, 2000, you know, correct me if I'm wrong with the numbers, but they had quite a big number in 2019. Well, Baldwin County don't even have a, a P and Z right now. I mean, you go to Baldwin County, you wanna build something, guess what? You don't have to have no permission. Their, their moderate, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, they've contacted you on some of the P and Z issues, haven't they?
Not Baldwin, that doesn't remember, sir.
Okay, Baldwin, Baldwin's looking at, at P and Z ordinance that they don't have. Baldwin County actually came in 2019 and met with you, because they, we had that ordinance in place, and I think they pretty much mirrored what we had done in Baldwin County, and once they got that in place, Baldwin County was able to start, you know, put some teeth in it. So, I mean, it's, and Mr. Henry told me, he goes, "Yeah, we've, we've, we've got the tools to do it now, and, and it's working." Yeah, they're having to stay on, you know, but they had hundreds of them on the books.
The interesting thing about the Baldwin County, it seemed to almost be presented that Baldwin County themselves took them down. Baldwin County did not take them down themselves, it was actually the property, it was the same process we take, we go after them, we go after them, we go after them, and then threaten to go to court if we need to. And I wanna say that it was like 100 and something, was what the inspector told me.
Is that wrong?
So, when we looked at comparable counties, we were actually very surprised that it would seem to be we were ahead of the curve, and, and you can't ask for better support in this county from our water department, personal wrecks, public works, they will pick up things, they will do things, they will turn in things, so we have a lot of support there. Unfortunately, court was closed for COVID, that was a large disruption in a lot of our progresses, but we're back on tracks. Our fines are very heavy, some of the heaviest ones around here. I've had multiple cases where they pay second offense fines, they've been put on probation, bench warrants have been issued, and they have been arrested for multiple different cases, so we have 200% support from the court, and that is never waived, we've never had any issue of non-support. Rolling into the complaint systems, like Commissioner Kitchens was saying, text my gov, online platform, calls in person, most people still wanna talk to somebody, or at least with my stuff, that they, you know, I tell them, you can still submit it to anonymous, but they generally wanna talk to somebody to find out if there's something that can be done and what we can do about it. But, easy online status, it's helped out Tim and I a lot, easy complaints, simple for people to go in and put them in. Originally, I was not part of the database. Tim's was going down, he came to me and asked me if I would like to go to a database platform, and I said, "Please, get away from pen and paper." It was after that, that we added the online citizen engagement portion, which I think was a good thing, but it has helped us out department-wise transparency. We work together quickly, easily, he can see my cases, I can see his, so it's, it's really helped out a lot with us. We do have a couple of issues, you'll get a runny's complaints, things that people think they see. One of the things we have to worry about is, just because something doesn't look pretty does not mean it's illegal, we still go out and inspect it, put a notation, if it's not a violation, we close it out. We are having some people, the same individual, reporting things multiple times end over end. They are documented, but it does have a tendency to slow down the process a little bit, cause you're still having to work every single one of those complaints that come in, so that's, that's kinda one issue that we're having. I think Sam, you had mentioned something about that, like making bib with multiple complaints and things having issues.
Yeah, yeah, so, and I don't know if it was an additional part of the software that would recognize an address or a location or something, so the software would, would say, "124 Smith Street." Okay, there's already a complaint at 124 Smith Street. Now, if it was a dilapidated house, and then it was an abandoned vehicle, and then it was debris by the road, or, you know, overgrown brush, or something like, so if it was four different complaints on the same address, that would be different, but if it, if it fell under the category of abandoned vehicle, and it's on a main road and people are riding by, and they, they ping it, okay, 124 Smith Street, abandoned vehicle, if nine people do that, then... If nine people do that, then we get nine complaints that there's an abandoned vehicle. We only need one to address it. So the system could identify that you got eight redundant calls, and it would categorize it as one, so that when you address that one, you wouldn't keep getting the same complaint. So it would, and it would also notify, I think it must have been an additional purchase, because it would notify, I'm texting the M124 Smith Street, it would say, thank you, this complaint has already been logged in, and, and not keep going through the process type, so, that, that might be something we can look at.
I think, honestly, more of ours, it's not one person complaining, two person, three person, it's the same person redundantly submitting, and even stating, I've already submitted this, I'm submitting it again, two, three, four, and five times, from one individual only saying one. Which I still track that, and we close out the additional ones, and we still have the main file, but I don't know if there's any much we can do about that, but that is one issue I have come up with. As far as code enforcement, since we went on the database, latter part of 2021, I've had over 236 complaint cases that I've worked, estimated probably 50 or more that was already on the books prior to going onto the online database. As far as abandoned, dilapidated, I've had an estimated 248 cases that I've handled for abandoned, dilapidated properties. Very few were in violation, they remained or either repaired or torn down. And one of the things I look at is, is I'm very fortunate the board has set aside money for tear and demolition of homes. But I'll look at it as the success of the program directly correlates to the minimal use of these funds. Compliance means no expenditures. It's good to have the money there, but initially, you don't wanna spend that money. So we push and we strive to get the property owners to handle this. The most recent house torn down was last week, one of your district, Ms. Lloyd. And like I said, we had a hold due to court, but we're back up and running with that. I originally had prepared 20 properties to go forward, for, we'll not sign the court, that got knocked down to six, and then got knocked down to five. So I have five in the process right now. Little bit of other things, timber permitting's going very well, we got a new updated system from the state of Georgia, I handle all the permitting and inspections for, for the Landfill inspection, everything's going good at our landfill, just had our APD inspection out there, everything is up to date, no discrepancies, I handle all the reports coming in from our engineers. Fuel systems, things like that, these are just other random things that my office handles. But overall, we've been really busy, we are seeing an uptick in complaints, I've always taken anonymous complaints, but I think the text my gov platform and the online platform are, are very beneficial, and really like the system that we have in place.
Commissioner Martin, you wanna, you got any questions you wanna start off?
Yes, we have a demolished homes process, have we identified those homes? Have we demolished any, and can we get an update, and can we also post that online? Because I'm still getting messages, it's about that, and I know we still have some houses that we haven't demolished since pre-COVID.
Okay, well, they just had one last week, you probably couldn't hear Tiffany, but they had one in Commissioner Woods' district just last week, that was taken down. And it was, it was-
It was with a total, you know, but I know we had almost 20, so we did one out of the 20, or we did about 12.
I-
Go ahead.
I had 20 prepared to go to court, sir, and, but continuous aggravating the property owners, it knocked it down to six, the other 14 were put in violation, I mean, out of violation. By the time I went to court, I only had five that I had to go forward with.
Did you hear that?
Did we go to the next set of homes? Because I know in the, in the BLIT report, they were, I want close to 200 properties or so.
Just like the code enforcement complaints and the banned dilapidated, that's gonna be a rotating door, as we handle some, and they go into compliance and follow up the books, you're gonna be picking up new ones, so that's gonna be a continuous process.
Right, and that's the proactive part, that I think, you know, I know I was talking about it, that we know that we have these, these lingering things, you know, rotating door, we got Tim that cleared, you did your job, you got the, the property owners in compliance, we go to the next set, you know, so that's just a continuous thing, and maybe we post that list on the 200 properties that are applied, and how you work the model, so people see the progress, and we know that the work's getting done, and then we just keep moving until we get it done, because at the end of the day, you know, they did a whole bunch of work, and I know you know what's out there in the community as well, I wanna make sure we get the support to get it done.
Commissioner Vaughn, you, anything?
Wendy, you got anything?
Hello?
All right. Commissioner Wood, you want?
No, sir, I've already said most everything I needed to say.
Commissioner Kitchens? No questions for Tim?
I don't think so.
All right, we can open up, up the floor for the public comments. Anyone like to come forward? Ladies first, Ms. Jan?
Okay.
I'm gonna let ladies go first.
This is really directed at Tiffany.
Introduce us, so we know who you are, where you live.
Jan Andrews, 122 Yukon Road, Macon, Georgia. I would be willing to bet, not very many people know about this online system that you can go in and process it. It's only the people that come to this meeting, and there aren't that many people that come to this meeting anymore. So how are the people out there in the county gonna know that we even have? You know, I know it's on the county website, but if there's a way we could let people know somehow-
And get with this nice lady over here at the other table.
Well, that's one way.
We are, we actually are having an uptick with other, I'm even having other departments use it, we are getting public citizens that are using it, so it's been very well, but I can give Ms. Laura some-
Yeah, it needs, we need that.
Mr. Crouse, you got a comment on that?
When I get a call, somebody wants to complain, I wanna keep it anonymous, I said, well, we do that online, or you can go there, you can keep it anonymous, and so I'll give them just brief directions how to find that, or I'll email it to them, so that they can access it and submit that complaint online.
All right.
Actually, the, the recording is on water department, public works, code enforcement, and planning is on it, so there's four different webpages on ours alone, where we can, people can submit.
And it's on our main webpage, too?
On the main webpage, yes, sir.
I don't even know how to use it, is there, I would love to get it for you, so you can train me how to go in and apply the meeting.
Yes, have you tried it?
No, I don't know.
Yeah, so it's pretty self-explanatory, I mean, I, I went on it on my phone, and it's just, what's your problem, where's your address, what do you wanna, you know, and-
What's your problem?
Yeah. What's your problem? You, you just, you just put it in there, and it, I mean, I didn't have a, and it, maybe it's because I'm, I'm, I've done it in, in, you know, Macon Bib before, but it's pretty self-explanatory on how to, you know, just, if you know the address, that's the biggest thing, if, if somebody's riding around, and they don't know the address, they see something, and they're riding along, you know, that might be the hardest thing, is trying to figure out what the physical address is that you wanna put in there.
Those that are phone savvy, the text my gov is a great thing, but if not, if you're more comfortable, the online is very simple, you can get it.
So is there a way we could go in, once we put something in there, how would we know that it was sold?
The same page on, on the webpage, there's a button that says, status, you click on it, and you can put in the number, you'll be given a number anytime, regardless of how you sent it in, it'll be a number, you can put it in, you hit enter, and it'll say either open, close, hold, court, it'll, it'll give you a status, so you know where it's at.
So other than open, close?
We can't divulge open records, I mean, not open records, but in an active case, possible prosecution, we cannot put open case, internal case files online.
So I couldn't even call you up to ask you?
If you were the one that submitted it, you can call, and we, there's some things I can, but I can't just, general person call and start asking about every case, I cannot discuss that internally.
Okay.
Yeah, you wanna give me a call, come by.
Yeah, I do. Good luck, Sherry, because I got a lot. I'm going around campaigning.
Mm-hmm.
This last time, I got a lot. Can you shout? I don't mind you putting my name.
Any other, any other ladies first, before we can get the gentleman up there? All right, sir, you can come up there, whoever wants to go first.
George Scoville, Confederate Drive. All right, under the current codes that you've got proposed to you, I just got a couple of questions. Junk vehicles must be kept, such vehicle obscured from public view, or from the view of adjacent property, are stored in an amount consistent with this chapter? And it says entirely obscured.
Okay, let me go ahead and say, I don't have our current codes in front of me, but those are not the proposed codes anymore. You're aware that this board accepted those codes, we had a first reading, a second reading, and we have new codes.
So these are not what we're gonna go by?
I don't know what version you're looking at.
Well, this is what you gave us, it says current, and it says proposed.
There was more than one version, there was more than one version, the final version of those, because remember, we met more than one time, we had more than one first reading. So the final version of our new set of ordinances, we've had the first reading, the second reading, and they have been accepted.
Right.
And so they are our new codes.
So they're enforced?
Yes. Yeah, we overhauled the entire set of ordinances to try to accommodate some of the changes that you all wanted. So what you're looking at, I can't tell you is the final version, but they are in place now, our entire new code regarding solid waste, nuisances, all of that is in place, and it can be found online.
I don't look the new one, I'd send them-
It hasn't been updated, it's been sent into Munich Code.
Say what now?
I have to send it to a company to put it on our website, and I don't know if they have put the new version up yet on our website.
So this is, that we're not going by this?
I just can't, I don't know what you're looking at, how I compare it to the final version.
Well, what it is, it says current, and it says proposed, and I was understanding the second reading was to adopt these proposed codes.
We adopted the new ordinances months ago.
Right.
With the recommendations that the BLIT committee requested?
Right.
Well, it says any motor vehicle that is covered by standard automobile covers one, that's in effect, right?
Yes.
All right, then it says, uh, current license plate and current insurance coverage.
Mr. Scoville, I'm not gonna tell you off the top of my head what's in the, what was in the final version, I just don't remember it word for word. So I can't tell you if what you're looking at is the final version of that ordinance.
I understand.
You said we could go online to get it?
Yes, I mean, it's our official code now, we've already done the first reading and the second reading, but there were changes made as we went along, so what you may be looking at may have some changes from the final.
All right, so that's, disregard this then, and wait on-
It may not be the final version, no, sir, but we've done the first reading, the second reading, and they were approved by the board, you have a whole new set of ordinances.
Which I was under the impression this, this was these.
No, they did that for you all months ago. Because that's what you all wanted, were those new ordinances that addressed some of the issues, some of the problems, we, we've had that in place now, it's been approved, and been our new ordinance for several months.
I understand, that's what I'm saying, but, that, that was my question, a couple of these, is what, what is gonna prevail, a standard automobile cover or a license plate registration?
What I'm saying is, I would suggest to you that you look at the final version, it's not gonna-
And where's that final version in, where is it at?
Sir?
Is it?
I can, I can email it to you.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you guys need to add these now?
Yes.
Anything else?
Also, what about junk vehicles? What, is, is there gonna be a, a limit, a time limit as to what time they've got to get rid of the things, when you file a complaint?
It's all in the new ordinance, I believe it's 30 days, that it can't sit there longer than 30 days, off the top of my head, but again, it's, it's specified in our new ordinance.
Okay, so that's still the-
And it's been approved, I mean, we don't have to go through any more readings, that was done several months ago, so, good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Frank Dew, 247 Turnerwood Road, Greed, Georgia. And I wanna tell y'all, I put up my sign last week, that says, be a good ham, you know, keep your trash off the ground, and I got trashed. In fact, you know, that's, I think that's funny, you know, but that's, that's what, supposed to be a joke. It did happen, it did happen.
It's not funny, because I, I just cut my grass and picked up all on the roadside of my house, yesterday, and today I come in from working and trash out there.
I'm thinking about taking my sign back down.
Four stops coming in from my truck down here today, between face mask and, I'm going. Well, look, just pick it up, you know.
That's the thing, oh, I'm gonna be, try to be great. In, in this, and, and I don't hear too good at my age, but in the conversation earlier, this text my gov thing is, I've, I've used it, and, and it works, but to find the status of it, you have to go on the, on the county website to do that, and, and I may be wrong, I won't clarify this, but when I go to the, if, I put in some anonymous, just to see what would happen. I am anonymous, but my cell phone number is on the system. So, are y'all familiar with that? Was that brought up a while ago?
It was, and there's, yeah, but there's no way for us to hide your cell phone number, that's your carrier, your plan, your phone.
So it, it would be a court record if you, if that was, if say, it went to court? It possibly would.
Yeah, but, but if you have Verizon, and you call Verizon and say, I don't want my number to be posted as public number-
Uh-huh, that's, that's what you have to do.
Yeah, yours would be an anonymous, unknown number to everybody.
Okay, okay.
But I believe there used to be, I don't know, was it R70 or something?
Star 67.
Yeah, that, that would temporarily block your number if you were calling somebody.
Okay, okay.
So I just don't know if that's still in effect, or-
It is.
It is?
Yeah, but I, I would hope that it is-
What about drop party lines, are they still?
As we move forward, that everybody knows that, that's gonna put, you know, that's gonna, you use the site.
I think there's a temporary number you can put in when you're texting or calling somebody, so it doesn't show your number.
Okay, and, and, and I know in the discussions this afternoon, there's a lot of, probably still questions, and I hope y'all are not trying to do this on your own, because I'm, I'm not attached to government like I once was, but you've got, you've got resources on state level of people that can come and can facilitate y'all to work through these issues on, on, you know, I heard, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't do this, being proactive, being reactive, there, we have, we have talked with a lot of people in government since we've been a BLIT committee, that it can be done, and it can be done without a lot of, you know, lawyers getting involved, lawsuits and what have you. So, so, you know, that's a rec, just another recommendation to y'all, that it would be, probably be money well spent if you had, you know, pay someone to come and facilitate for y'all. I, I believe that, that when we spent, well, we spent almost three years now on, on BLIT, three years, in August will be three years, I think we came up first time in August, and then Chris and I talked, what have you, and we, we decided to, to form BLIT committee, and we got, we got a lot of help from Mill George Rita Commission here. There's a lot of, there's a lot of information in here, and a lot of paths that y'all can take to, to address BLIT, and if we don't do it now, I'm afraid it'll be around 20 years, we'll, you know, which I probably won't be around, we'll, oh, we, we might regret it. We, we don't wanna get like Macon Bib, and they're behind the, they're, they're behind the eight ball now, trying to clean it up and get things right. So, so that's, that's all I have.
Well, I tell you, and Tiffany will tell you, there's a lot of pictures that were turned in, that I called Tiffany, I said, Tiffany, I know these pictures, you know, and it's, it's either workhorse or showhawk. I'm not big on saying, guess what I've done?
Right.
I just get it done and walk off, you know, I ain't seen a showhawk pull a plow yet, but, you know, I just, I'll pull that plow and keep on going. So many times I've got there, and I told Tiffany, I said, can you identify these? I said, I can see these, you know, I know where these are at, and Tiffany, she was also going through it, and I said, I'm looking at all these pictures, but, you know, I can't tell many times, just even here recently, of the, of the findings we've had. I don't go out there and tell them, I guess what we did, we found two illegal dumps, and that's the, the most recent, you know, literally, I mean, BLIT illegal dumps, that, you know, I don't know where we're gonna go with it, you know, I think you got one, you're, you're having to put fines on now, I don't know where to buy them, but, but those are things that a lot of people don't see.
That's right.
And we're not gonna get on the internet and say, oh, guess what, we just caught so and so, you know, illegal dumping, no, that ain't, that ain't, you know, let's get it, let's get the problem solved, and keep it going down the road.
Right, right. But again, there's a lot of pathways that, in this rec- But again, there's a lot of pathways that, and this recommendation here, a lot of pathways for y'all to, to address. We can't do it, I think our work, our work is basically done. All we can do, it's in y'all's hands. But I would like to publicly thank our committee, they have truly worked hard, they put on a lot of, put in a lot of hours, a lot of mileage, a lot of time with, and money in this thing, our own personal money. And, and we did it out of love for Jones County, so.
We realize that.
And we thank y'all.
I think I had somebody, what, you want to speak?
I would love to be this meeting of the county commissioners.
You want to sign in for the county commissioner, Lee?
It's on about the driveway.
Okay, just, just sign in right before the meeting, that way you can be addressed. Let's go, we got, we got a little time, and then we'll have a-
One other thing I'd like to ask is, I'm driving around the county, we've obviously seen types of fencing, I don't know who's allowed it to put up, I don't know if it's Tiffany, whoever, but there needs to be a standard, in our opinion, of tight fencing. If you're going to hide something, for example, Walt Scunney is on Whittaker Road, is a plumber. He's got multitudes of plumbing equipment, but he's got a nice, beautiful fence, he's got a beautiful home, he keeps it that way. And you can't see any of his equipment behind that nice fence, but yet, somebody out there on Highway 18 has just stuck up plywood. You can still see the junk behind the plywood, you can see it in the middle of the entrance of the lot. There's one guy down, Grisleville Road's got like pallet stacked up. So, my question is, a thought, food for thought is, we, don't you think we should have some kind of a standard type fencing if you're going to allow fencing to go up to hide things? Why is it fair for Walt to spend several thousand dollars on his fence, and others, folks, get to buy two or three pieces of plywood or throw up some more sloppy looking pallets and mess?
The one on 18 is still in court.
Is it still in court?
Yes.
Okay.
What is there is not substantial, we're still in court without them.
What plywood?
The highway 18 one.
What about Garrett, Highway 18 in Morrisville? It looks like netting, some kind of netting they've stuck up.
He's got the vehicles out of view, and that was-
You still see them?
I'm by the dog check, that one is still in court.
You can still see them, and then the Garrett on 27th, right at all.
All right, we, we, okay, we're getting out of text on what we're, about conversation, go ahead, Tim.
As staff, I'm hearing different opinions on, we're making a paradigm shift from reactive, because, you know, for, the whole time I've been here, strictly reactive, I got a complaint, I address the complaint, and I don't go fishing for anything else. And so, if we're going to make that paradigm shift away from that, I need clear guidance on what that is. And I'm not, I'm hearing kind of differing, and I don't want to go out and do this without the board's blessing. So, I really feel like we need like a written policy, so I can explain to staff, this is how we're doing this now. And I just, I don't have that clear guidance, and I'm not walking away with that clear in my mind.
We can, we can do that.
Of course, we need to address it in an agenda item in a future meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
All right, we got clarification on everything, great, thank you, Tim. That's what we need to know, we got some shortcomings, we need to know. That's one, that's the main reason for this work session, is something we need to do different, and you just give us that, you know. But, anything else, any other comments tonight? Anything else from the board? We can get a motion to adjourn the work session?
Motion to adjourn, Chairman.
Second.
On favor of I?
Aye.
Please.
We want to call you back at six.
What you want to sign up for? What you, what you want to sign up for?